Thank you, Brian. I wasn't expecting that. All right. Welcome, everybody, to this November 14, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We don't have any proclamations tonight, so I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation from our own Robert Burgett, and that's going to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led today by the Junior Girl Scout Troop 26003 from Edgewood Elementary, our fifth grader. So after we get done with the invocation, if y'all will come up, we'll let y'all lead us in the pledge. So if everyone will please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for another day we give life and live it and celebrate you. We want to thank you for an opportunity to come together as a group. We want to ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support in our meeting tonight. Let us consider our community. Let us nurture and bond our communities together. Let us keep you in the focus of our heart, minds, and souls as we go through each day. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please, if y'all will come on up, y'all can come up to the podium. And if... Y'all can all come up. Come on. All right. And if everyone will face the flag, and then we'll follow the lead of these ladies.
Girl Scouts petition. Girl Scouts salute the colors. Please join us and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Salter, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtin?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Present.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms? Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
So you got one absentee, but you got a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of October 24, 2022. Those have been distributed previously by Ms. Salter. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved 10 to 0. Which brings us to board vacancies. We have one vacancy tonight to fill. It's the Ward Five HEC position. We have received one applicant, which is Anita Morgan, who's the incumbent in this position. So, Ward Five, y'all want to make a... I'll let y'all do it if you want.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Anita Morgan for another term on the Homewood Environmental Commission.
And I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Andres, a second from Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Ms. Morgan's approved 10 to 0.
We appreciate that for her. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Sims, I know we had complete streets open, but I don't think we got an applicant. But I think we... At least, Ms. Salter and I had that closed today, so I'm going to reopen that until December 12th, if that works for you.
That sounds good.
Okay. So December 12th at 4:30.
And the beautification form is still open?
Is still open until our next meeting, correct?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. We do have a few additions to the agenda tonight. First, the additions to the committee referral agenda. First one is 11-1122, request for consideration to declare a total 2014 Police Tahoe as well as miscellaneous item surplus, brought to us by Gordon James. And this will go to our finance committee. The next item, also to committee referral, 12-1122, request to set a bid opening for decorative street signs, brought to us by Randy Hambley. This one will also go to finance. And then, the last one to committee referral will be 13-1122, request for an update on Salter Pocket Park, brought to us by Barry Smith and Jolite Nelms. And this one will go to PND. Then we have one item to add to other new business tonight. It'll be 14-1122, request for consideration of an ABC O20 Restaurant Retail Liquor for Social Taco located at 1831 28th Avenue South, Suite 175, brought to us by Melody Salter, our city clerk. When we get to that, well, there's some contingencies that will be necessary for that one. All right. So with those additions, I would entertain a motion as second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtin, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 10 to 0. There's nothing on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go straight into old business. First item, 25-0417, request for consideration of 18th Street Revitalization Project, brought to us by Counselor Gualtin, and we'll start with a report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. The finance committee met on November 7th and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right. So we have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 10 to 0 and be Resolution 22-191. Next item, 08-1022, request for consideration to deposit public funds with Regions Bank Financial, brought to us by Robert Burgett, our finance director, and another report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right. So we have another motion from finance. Any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0 and be Resolution 22-192. Next item, 15-1022, request to consider street lighting at 121 Henna Street, 105 Marcy Lane, 204 Fairlane Drive, 105 Ridgemore Drive, and 201 Hillmore Lane, brought to us by Counselors Wolverton and Alamon. And we've got a report from two different committees. We'll start... Let's start with public safety. Mr. Gualtin.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met November 7th and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item. The motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right. And a report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mr. President. The finance committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right. So we have a motion from finance and public safety. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 22-193. Next item, 15-0622, request for permission to work within the right-of-way on Reece Street, 16th Street, and alleys surrounding 1707 Reece Street, brought to us by Cale Smith. We are going to carry this item over again at the request of the parties. Next item, 09-1022, request for permission to work in the right-of-way to install temporary construction fence demolition and rebuild sidewalk at 333 Greens Springs Highway, brought to us by Alex Breeze, the project manager for Chase Bank and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton.
Do you not have the minutes?
And I know that we voted in... Voted to approve it. Yep, you're right. Yep. We just barely had a quorum, but we voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement. Motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Harden. And there was a little bit of discussion and clarification about sidewalk being put back in, which is primarily the reason for this item coming to us to begin with, so.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 22-194. Next item, 10-1022, request for consideration to permit removal and replacement of one tree in the city right-of-way at 531 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Jason Hale and Wyatt Pugh. And another report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton.
Yes. Again, the committee met and voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement. Motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Harden. Again, there was discussion briefly about this item and whether or not it counted towards the property's tree quota. It does not since it's in the city right-of-way.
All right. So we have another motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 22-195. Next item, 05-0522, public hearing continued from October 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. for vacation of right-of-way at 16th Street adjacent to 2901 Central Avenue, brought to us by Lee and Chelsea Maniscalco. Again, we will carry this item over another time at the request of the parties. 16-1022, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of assigned variance to the front of 2808 18th Street South, brought to us by Megan Ellis of Advanced Sign and Lighting LLC and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes. Committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Ms. Andres.
All right. So with that, I will go ahead and open this public hearing and ask the applicant to come on up and explain the sign variant... The sign variance request, please.
You need me to sign it in too quick?
Yes, please. Thank you. You've done it so many times, I forget to tell you.
Okay. My name's Megan Ellis. I'm with Advanced Sign and Lighting, and I'm here to request reverse lit channel letters for the Visual Comfort and Co.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
Megan, you talked about this in committee meeting, but I just want you to say it again. The black square that is there is not actually going to... It's just showing that it's... That's at night. That's what it looks like at night. So the dark is just showing the... It's not a black square. Right, yeah. There's no black behind it. It's just the letters. And that's how they'll look when they're illuminated. And it's like, like you said, it's like the halo illumination. Exactly. So the illumination is actually going to illuminate the wall instead of the front of the letter. So the letters are a shadow, and the lighting will be behind it, so it illuminates around the letters.
And I know they changed their name. Is the new name Visual Comfort or is the new name Sarca Lighting?
Visual Comfort. Sarca, that's just an example because Sarca, that's the one in Seattle. They haven't... That is an example. You said also in committee, the reason they did not want to do what is actually approvable in the downtown area, because we all approve exterior lighting, which would require like the goosenecks. And the reason they didn't want to do that is because they are a lighting company that doesn't sell that kind of fixture, so they didn't want to eliminate their sign with someone else's product that they couldn't buy in their store. I just wanted to put that up there.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I'll make just one quick comment. It's nothing against the sign. It looks great. But I've made this point before. We, you know, put this ordinance in place and we keep issuing variances on it. At some point, we have to, you know, either start to enforce the variance or we need to change the ordinance. So it's nothing against the sign, but that's my reason for voting no on this.
And Wyatt, remind us, there are no other businesses on 18th that have illuminated signs. Am I right?
That's correct. This would be the only one.
Yeah. And that includes any kind of exterior lighting as well? Like, nobody else has like gooseneck lights, do they?
That's right. I don't...
Oh, does O'Henry's?
Havish Savages. I think Johnny's is eliminated. Is there a few? On the front side, not on the rear.
Right. This is on the front.
Yeah, there may be some that are lit with a gooseneck light, exterior illumination, which is permitted.
Yeah, right. That is allowed.
But not like this.
Okay. I got you.
Mr. President, I would add that, to your point, the last item that we discussed, and you made that point, I think, speaking for myself, I felt there was a hardship and a self-imposed hardship, but the design of the building, it was difficult to see the light behind the archway in that particular development. I do not see that being an issue with this business, and I would agree with you. As lovely as the lighting looks, given that there is no other lighting like that on 18th Street, and that we have been giving out variances, it is time... I mean, I feel like this is not a hardship, is my... I would also support that. No vote.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gier?
The only thing I'd like to add is, you know, the gooseneck lighting... This does go back to your point that we might need to relook at the ordinance. Gooseneck lighting is a lighting that, you know, kind of connotes vintage downtowns and old-timey downtowns. This is a more modern building, a modern facade. And, you know, I don't believe that a gooseneck light would really go with the type of storefront that is being presented.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. In that case, is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
Second.
All right. Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We can. It's fine.
Okay. All right. So Counselor Gualtin?
No.
No?
No.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton? Counselor Sims?
No.
Counselor Jones? Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor Nelms? Oh, I'm sorry. She's not here. Sorry. Counselor Andres?
No.
Counselor Harden?
No.
And President Wyatt?
No. All right. So that fails 2 to 8.
Thank you just for that one, because that was a lot of...
No, no. That's okay. All right. Next item, 11-1022, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 2712 18th Place South, brought to us by David Brandt of Favorite Signs and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues.
Yes. The committee met last week, and Mr. Pugh had gotten a late, last-minute email from the applicant asking for this item to be dropped. But we had already set the public hearing, so. Right? Isn't that right?
Wait. I've got the... I've got that this one was... The one that was carried over. It was a different one that was going to drop.
Okay, okay, okay. Sorry, sorry, sorry. This was after he asked you to make a special...
I hate when they do this. This particular one, 2712 18th Place South, they wanted to go back and...
Oh, that's right. They hadn't finalized their design.
They asked that it be carried.
That we carry it over. That's right. I'm sorry. Got the two confused.
So then what I'm going to do is go ahead and open the public hearing, but I will carry it over and send this item back to committee, and it'll come back to us next time, and we will continue the public hearing at that time. All right. All right. Next item, 12-1022, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to allow a monument sign in the city right-of-way at 1856 Lancaster Road, brought to us by David Brandt of Favorite Signs and Wyatt Pugh. And a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith.
This is the one that needs to be dropped.
Got it. So I'll go ahead and open this public hearing, ask if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Since there's not, I will close the public hearing.
Second.
And we have a motion to drop from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Andres. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is dropped 10 to 0. All right. Next item, 15-0722, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of annexation for Board of Education property into the city of Homewood, brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. This item was already reported out from PND. So I think... Is that correct?
A while ago.
A while ago?
Because this was on the agenda for a long time. I don't remember.
I think it was a while ago that it was reported out, so.
Did we have to post this one for...
Yeah.
90 days.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
They sent it out without recommendation pending public hearing.
We did do that. It was 3 to 0.
All right. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And I believe there's someone here for the applicant.
Do you mind signing on that sheet, sir? Thank you.
And I'll... Let me just say this at the outset, before we get to the public hearing. The only thing that's before this council tonight is the annexation of this land. Nothing else about anything... Anything to do with this land is before this body. So we'll limit any comments to that.
Sure. My name's Curtis Eaton with LBYD Engineers, 880 Montclair Road. We're here representing the school board for the annexation of this property. The history of this property was, it was originally in the city of Vestavia. It was gifted to the school board a number of years ago. I don't know the exact number. And basically, it was never picked up to be annexed into the city of Homewood. So what we're trying to do is clean that up and then ultimately re-survey that into the overall school campus.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Come on up.
My name's Liz Elaby. I live at 612 Cobb Street. And I oppose the parking lot and therefore the annexation that is going to set it in motion.
Well, just to be clear, the parking lot is not before us. The only thing that's before us is the annexation, and the school board already owns the property. So I don't... If you've got any issues about the annexation, I'm happy to hear them.
Well, there are some things about the process that have bothered me that I'd like to use this time to tell you all.
The process of what, exactly? Of the annexation request?
Well, no, of the parking lot planning, which this is part of...
No, the parking lot plan is not before us. The only thing that's before us is whether to annex this land.
Well, if the annexation had come before the council sooner, we would have been more aware sooner of the reason for it, which is the parking lot expansion on that hillside.
Well, actually, the land, as I understand it, was donated many, many years ago, and the annexation didn't happen at that time for whatever...
But if it could have moved forward back when they were planning this expansion, we would all be more aware.
Well, I can't speak to that. We can... This body can only act when a request comes to it. So you can speak to the school board about that.
The planning for the parking lot began before the pandemic, from what I understand, from what I've heard, and...
I don't think that's true, but...
It's not true.
Well, I think you said in Planning Commission...
Yes, I did. Not about that space at all. That... When I... President Wyatt and I met with the school board, we were actually involved on a committee to locate parking at the high school right before the pandemic, and the spaces that we were adding were... Was a connected... A path connecting...
Just to be clear, we weren't adding spaces. All that we were asked to do was to try to talk to Sanford about borrowing spaces for a limited amount of time. It had nothing to do with this property.
Okay. It had to do with the other property by the...
It did not. It had to do with their intramural field parking that already exists.
Okay. Well, I guess I misunderstood the conversation that you had. You said that you and President Wyatt were talking about adding parking to the high school, the parking problem.
Again, we were talking about asking Sanford for the ability to use existing parking spaces.
We were going to add a walkway from the... Where the intramural fields are connecting to the high school. We were... We were talking about...
Well, then, anyway, I guess the school board's planning preceded this annexation by a lot of time, and if the public had known about it and been able to...
It's not the same land.
This is... We're not... We're not... We're not in charge of the parking lot, and therefore, we're not the people who designed the parking lot. So if you have a problem with the parking lot, my guess is that you should talk to the school board.
Well, I have.
Okay.
And so am I not allowed to talk about...
You're allowed to talk about this issue, which is about annexation. If you've got an opinion as to whether or not the land should be annexed, that's what this public hearing is for.
Well, I feel like the annexation was put off until the last minute so that the public would be kept in the dark about the reason for the annexation.
And all I can do to answer that is to tell you, we acted on it as soon as it was brought to us. We cannot act on it until it is brought to us. So if you've got an issue about timing, I'm sure the school board will be happy to address that with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak for or against this item?
Mr. President, I had a question.
Yes, Ms. Andres.
What was the...
Actually, let me do this real quick. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, Ms. Andres, I'm sorry.
What is the requirement for when we get a request, and then we have to set the public hearing? Mr. Kendrick, what is the length of time?
This is really kind of unusual. This property is also contiguous to the city of Vestavia, as you understood. So it's been published for 90 days, which typically is not the case.
And it's been on the agenda every...
Every time for 90 days. Correct.
Since July.
And has the city of Vestavia de-anexed it?
Yes. A long time ago.
They de-anexed it years ago, but yes.
I can tell you, when they... They de-anexed it on November 22, 2010.
12 years ago. Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. In that case, Mr. Kendrick, if you give us a first reading.
Yes, there's an ordinance annexing to the city of Homewood certain properties described in this petition pursuant to Act 32 of the Acts of the Legislature of the State of Alabama. Whereas on July 7, 2022, all the owners of here and described property did file with the city clerk a petition for annexation, which petition in substance stated that the owners were all the owners of the here and after described property, and that the property was contiguous to the present city limits of the city of Homewood and not within the corporate limits of another municipality, and that petition contained the certificate of one of the owners made before known to the public stating that the petition contained the signatures of all the owners of the territory described in the petition. Whereas the city council did set November 14, 2022, as a time and place for the public hearing. Whereas pursuant to the petition and the provisions of Act 32, public notice was given to the... Notice was given to the public on July 30, 2022, of the public hearing set tonight. Whereas the city clerk has reported to the council that no protest or objections to the petition have been received by the city clerk. Whereas at the public hearing, all persons' interest may be heard concerning the annexation. Now, therefore, being ordained by the city council that no objections or protests and rioting were filed with the city clerk of the city prior to the date of the public hearing, that the matters set forth in petition are founded and determined to be true and collected in all respects, that the parcel of property described in Exhibit A is annexed into the city of Homewood upon the adoption of the ordinance, and that the city clerk is ordered and directed to file with a judge of probate a certified copy of the ordinance, together with a certified copy of the petition, and pay all costs and fees incurred for such action, that a copy of the ordinance be forwarded to the tax assessor for Jefferson County, and that the corporate limits of the city are being the same or hereby rearranged so as to include the above described property. And said property forthwith shall become a part of the corporate limits of the city. Section 7, that the provision of this ordinance shall become effective many upon the passage and approval of the city council and the mayor or as otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you very much. We now entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andres, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So that is 10 to 0, and now I entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtin, second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. It's also 10 to 0 and will be ordinance 2855. All right. Next item, 06-0622, public hearing set for November 28, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. To consider amending the city zoning ordinance to include the fence ordinance brought to us by Counselor Andres and Cale Smith. and Cale Smith. We will carry this item over until our next meeting on the 28th. Next item, 050822, request to set a public hearing to consider revisions to the tree and landscape ordinance, brought to us by Cale Smith, and we will start with a report from PND, Ms. Andrus.
Yes, after hearing from our city engineer, Cale Smith, the committee voted four to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending a public hearing set for December 12th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. The motion was made by Counselor Waltney, seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right, so we will set that public hearing for December 12th at 6:00 p.m. All right, which brings us to the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wolverton, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, ten to zero, which brings us to other new business. First item, 071122, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a secondary front yard fence setback variance at 1632 28th Avenue South, brought to us by April Blumberg and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that public hearing for November 28 at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 081122, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a secondary front yard fence setback variance and permission to work in the right-of-way at 1400 Roseland Drive, brought to us by Kara Prin and Wyatt Pugh. That public hearing is also set for November 28 at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 091122, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a commercial front yard fence variance and permission to work in the right-of-way at 217 Oxfam Circle, brought to us by Stuart Robinson of the Pennington Group and Wyatt Pugh. We will also set that public hearing for the 28th at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 101122, requests for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of October 25, 2022, through November 14, 2022, brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones, I believe this is Mr. Waltney. Senator?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have reviewed the invoices this afternoon and had a few questions, and Mr. Burgett was available to answer those. I did find it interesting that we stroked one of our first checks for streetlight maintenance that was the result of al-dots not maintaining their streetlights on the interstate. So, good that the lights are working, but it's a shame we're having to spend the taxpayer's money on this, so...
Yes, I agree, it is.
Any other questions or comments? I assume yours is a motion to approve?
It is a motion to approve.
All right, and a second for Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is ten to zero, and we resolution 22196.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and then our last item, 141122, request for consideration of an ABC O20 Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Social Taco located at 1831 28th Avenue South, Suite 175, brought to us by Melody Salter. Mr. Waltney, you want to take this, or?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I would recommend approval of this pending confirmation of no objection from police and fire and receipt of a certificate of occupancy.
And I believe we also need the...
We need the final...
The final approval from the ABC Board?
And final approval from the ABC Board.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Waltney, a second from Mr. Wolverton. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, ten to zero. All right, which brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, I just have a few things tonight. Everybody, want to make sure you remember that the city staff Thanksgiving lunch is actually this Wednesday at Edgewood Elementary. This is the first time in, I guess since COVID that it's actually gone back into the elementary schools, so we're excited to finally be doing that again. So this, again, this Wednesday at Edgewood Elementary School, I believe it starts at 11:30, is that right? Okay, so 11:30.
That's right.
Also, don't forget about the Christmas parade coming up on December 6th, Tuesday December 6th. I know Melody will have y'all's float looking fantastic, as she always does.
The pressure.
Always do a great job with that, and I'm excited to announce that the Versiglia family from Piggly Wiggly will be lighting the star this year, so we're excited to see that as well. And then lastly, congratulations to the Homewood High School football team on a great win versus Pike Road last Friday night. Excited to see the boys in the third round and heading down to Saraland for a very long trip to play, to play some football on Friday night, so it's down near Mobile. But good luck to, to all the Patriots and hope we bring back that win. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Waltney?
I do not need to set public safety, as there are no items on the agenda. Besides that, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
No announcements or comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
No comments from me tonight, thank you.
Mr. Wolverton?
I'll set Public Works for, I'm assuming after Finance.
I thought we established that PND gets to go.
Yeah, are you going to be there when Finance is wrapped up?
I bumped you to last in the queue.
I'd like to do that, honestly.
Me too.
I'll be there.
Okay.
So, sacrificially.
Mm-hmm.
The Christmas trees got up real quick around town. I want to thank Public Works and all those guys for getting all of that out. My kids were quick to notice that all the, all the streets were, were hung and the trees are up. Looking forward to some tree lighting ceremonies over at Patriot and, I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Yeah, we had, I don't, I know we had one meeting since then, but I think we kind of forgot that the First Responders 5K went well this year. Sad to report that I got beat out by a firefighter who apparently runs 5Ks for a living because he smoked me, but it was, it was a great event and look forward to next year. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Thanks so much. I just wanted to report that the beautification board met today. As a reminder, there is still a Ward 2 vacancy, looking for applicants for it. Also, in addition to Mayor McCluskey mentioning the Christmas parade, beautification board is also working with Rabbi Weinbaum on a menorah lighting again this year, which will be back at the curve on December 21st, so please save that to your calendar as well.
What day was it then?
So it's the 21st.
Of no...
December 21st. Actually, Hanukkah's a little bit late, so I think it's Hanukkah's December 18th through the 26th, and the lighting will be on the 21st at 5:30. And similar to the accolades for Public Works, also just very appreciative of the lighting going up and coordination with the beautification board, also the flags for Veterans Day, really appreciative of that, and Randy's team, love seeing that along Green Springs this year. And congrats to the Chamber on a fantastic holiday open house. Really was a well-attended event. Talked to a number of business owners down there who were really enthusiastic and thankful for that, that boost, and so kudos to Meredith and the entire Chamber and its board on a fantastic event. And that's it for me tonight. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the, I want to thank you for a well-run meeting tonight. It's sometimes difficult to keep everybody in line, but you're, you're doing a great job.
Appreciate it.
Staying on topic. I did want to report, I did attend a League of Municipalities meeting this week, and I have a lot of information I'll, I'll share individually. Ms. Andrus, I have a lot of things to share with you relating to art projects and things like that, that I think you'd be interested in. One of the quotes that I heard was really interesting. There was a consultant that was talking about bridging the gap between the police department and the community, and, you know, all the things that she was talking about, I thought, you know, the mayor led that effort here at the very beginning, starting in 2020, and I want to thank you for that. But one of the quotes that she provided was really interesting to me. "The illiterate of the future are not those who cannot read or write, but those who cannot learn, unlearn, and relearn." So I thought that was a really interesting, interesting quote, and just a lot, a lot of good information about projects that we can look at that will bring more revenue. I'm always looking for that, so lots of good information that I'll, I'll share with the council as we go through. But, and I was at the football game, and that sure was exciting on Friday, so congratulations to them. And I, I hope we can get a bus down there. I don't know if they're going to take a bus, but...
There won't be buses.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eighteen. Okay, okay, and it'll...
They rescheduled the basketball games.
And I figured, you know, and my son asked me, are they, will they do that? And, and I said, well, it's probably going to be from 2:00 until 2:00 in the morning. And I said, if they can do that for the show choir, they can do that for the school. So I'm very proud that, that they're doing that, because, you know, we need a big, a big section there. So, so anyway, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Um, yes, the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission is meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 here at City Hall up on the fourth floor. They, their normal meeting date is the second Tuesday, but since last week was election day, they decided to move it, so that's tomorrow night. And then, I know a lot of times we don't really know what the Jefferson, Shelby, St. Clair Mental Health Authority does, but Donna Burgess is one of our citizens who is a representative on that board for us, and she's actually the upcoming president of that board, and they are actually getting ready to open a Region 2 Crisis Care Center here in Homewood. It is going to be almost directly across the street from our new police department, and apparently our law enforcement officers are very excited about that idea because they are going to have 48 beds for people who are experiencing psychiatric behavioral or substance abuse crises, crises, I guess is the right word. And 32 of those beds are going to be temporary stays, which are about 23 hours, and then 16 extended stay beds, which can be for as long as a person might need that. It's going to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. They are expected to open it. I believe they're going to have a ribbon cutting sometime here pretty soon, and I think they're actually having all of the police officers from Homewood over to see the new center and what they're going to be doing. They received a $7 million grant to build the crisis care center, and they have named it after Dr. Craig, who I believe is a Homewood resident and was active on this board for a long, long time. And they will be able to take, they will be able to intake patients directly there. A lot of times when law enforcement officers have someone who is experiencing a psychiatric problem, they have to take them to the hospital, and they end up staying at the hospital for long hours, waiting for the patient to be either admitted or discharged or whatever. So this will be a place where they can take somebody very close to where they are, and they won't have to stay because they will have the staff available to deal with the person almost immediately. So I think it's going to save a lot of time for our officers, and it's going to be a good thing for our community. So I will keep y'all posted on that opening, but it's a bit, they're very proud of this and very excited about, and when I find out what that date is for the opening, and I know they were anxious to have, if any of the city council or staff wanted to go over and check out the new center, I think they would welcome that, so. And that is it. Oh, and I, special issues right after Public Works.
Thank you very much.
When did you say that, Grant?
Um, I, I don't know the date yet. Donna's supposed to get it to me, and as soon as I know, I will let y'all know. I will send it out in a text.
Ms. Andrus?
I was at PND to follow special issues. I wanted to take, Mr. Smith, he joined me and Counselor Waltney last week on the banks of the Cohaba River. Our Jefferson County Council Coalition met to meet with the Cohaba River Keepers and the Nature Conservancy to talk about stormwater and stream management and creek wall management, and all kinds of things that we talked about, and grant monies that are available. So, you know, if anybody has any ideas for that grant money, get with Cale. And it was a really great meeting and a great presentation. I am now the chair of the JC3, so, anyway, taking over from Casey Middlebrooks, who's done a great job and really led us for the last couple of years. It is a great time to be a Homewood Patriot. I mean, the spirit at the high school is just through the roof. I had to miss the open house from the Chamber because it was the show choir, the show choir had a fantastic show, and, and then we've just really enjoyed seeing the football, all these kids. I have a senior this year, we have seniors this year, so all these kids that our kids have grown up with that are just playing lights-out football. It's just been a total blast to watch, and go Patriots.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
I want to tell everybody how grateful I am for the work we do here and the employees, the work that the employees do for our city. It's always great, you know, we've had, I had a garbage pickup issue, she's had a garbage pickup issue, and it gets taken care of, you know, very quickly. So Berkeley swears that the garbage guys picking up your garbage know who we are. I tell them, no way they know who I am, but he swears they do. But anyway, they do great work for us, so thank you for our employees.
Thank you. I've just got a couple of things. First, I got to do, one of my favorite things that I get to do is see Counselor and go to my pals' day at Edgewood a couple of weeks ago, and for those of us that are empty nesters, this is like a big deal, right? Because I don't have kids this little anymore, so I got to hang out with Victoria and had a great time. So thank you to Edgewood for inviting us to do that. And then also wanted to let people know a couple of things about the city manager committee and it's what we've got coming, what the committee has coming up. The first is a public, our first public input session for city manager, that will be on November 30th at 5:30 in here. The mayor's agreed to give his presentation again, and then the committee will break up into different sections of the room. Each one will have some information about a particular option that is available to us, and people can come and offer their suggestions, ask questions, whatever they want to do. Secondly, the Chamber annual meeting in December, their luncheon on December 12, I'm sorry, December 13th at 11 o'clock, the Chamber is going to have Sam Gaston and Jeff Downs be speakers, and I have agreed to moderate that panel, and we will be discussing city manager stuff, what, what those two have done with their cities, and, and present some information to the Chamber and anyone else that would like to show up for that luncheon. You can probably hear some good information out of two good city managers that happen to be our neighbors, so please feel free to join us for either of those. All right, with that, I think we're done, so we, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and we'll see everyone in a couple of weeks.